This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the February 5th, 2025 South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners meeting. I will call this meeting to order. We have all Commissioners present this evening. At this time, I would ask you to all please rise, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to announce that all public sessions of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted to the township website for public access. At this time, I will ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to review our public virtual meeting rules.
Thank you. The public virtual meeting rules are as follows. Courtesy of the floor for non-agenda items will be at the beginning and end of the agenda. Public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. For all listed agenda items, the board president will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the Board of Commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized and move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually, please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid any background noise that may cause interference during the meeting. The chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address into the chat box. The staff member monitoring go-to-meeting will then unmute your microphone and you will have the opportunity to comment or ask a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I'd also like to announce the Board of Commissioners met an executive session on January 16th and prior to tonight's meeting to discuss legal and personnel matters. Agenda item four is courtesy of the floor. This is opportunity for any member of the public to comment on any non-agenda items. Before I open the floor to the public, we do have a special guest this evening to welcome. I'd like to welcome County Executive Phil Armstrong. Good evening.
One of my favorite spots to come, and I'm kind of on my, ooh, good sound system. I'm on my farewell tour. So what I'm really doing now is by, I made a promise beginning, and I'm going to keep it right in through the last year, is getting out to every municipal, town, city, whatever meeting I can. And this is one of the best places. It really is. You guys do a fantastic job, and I really wanted to say thank you for the cooperation we've had over the last, I'm hoping, eight years. It's still seven, but one more year. I know you guys are going to still work hard, and we are too. We've got a lot of good programs. I saw some of you today at our Housing Authority. We're looking at a problem. We looked at, you know, what everybody says, one of the biggest problems this area has, and the word "housing" comes up. So we're dealing with it. We're going to look at it. We're going to study it. We're going to come up with best solutions. And then we're going to be cheerleaders to try to get everybody on board with it. And as you know really well in South Whitehall, sometimes expansion isn't always the most popular thing, said completely honestly. But where and what kind and how can we do it and still meet what we need to do for the school districts in the town? And I think we do that by bringing you all together and cooperating. And I do, you know, and I mean this sincerely. I said this today. I will always say this. I think we do so well in this area in the county because we all do work together. There's no, you know, and I think, I'm hoping if my legacy is anything, I got rid of politics in local government. In fact, it doesn't matter. We look at jobs and we get them done. Our radios are about to happen. We're going to have that going to the board next Wednesday night if everything goes okay. Law has worked it out. We're going to offer them no interest rate whatsoever if they're paid back within five years, 5% interest if you take 10 years. So we thought that was the best way. I know your municipality have already started budgeting and you're way ahead of the game, some of the smaller ones a little bit. We're putting money for expanding our fire training facilities, the three different ones. We're going to upgrade them. We realized the problems of getting volunteers. I met this afternoon, real, real heavy meeting with my jail, my senior home, my 911. Hard to get employees, you know. How do you get them? How do you keep them? How do you retain them? And it's not, in fact, our guards are one of the best paid guards in the state. Doesn't mean we're still snot short guards. So, you know, you can't just say, well, let's close the jail. We're not going to do that. We were going to have, we're not going to close their senior home. But we're working on solutions and hopefully that'll be. But basically, I wanted to say thank you and say, do you have any questions? My last time to answer them in front of you, or you can always call. And I didn't bring my assistant with me tonight. She's up there in the pregnancy part. I told her not to drink the water, but she did anyway. So she's going to stay home for a while. We're still, you know, she's still manning the phones and those kind of things. So, any questions, Madam President?
I don't have a question. I do want to recognize and thank you for your eight years of service as County Executive and for always being a friend and a support to South Whitehall.
Thank you.
Thank you very much and wish you the best.
It's the best job there is in this area. No doubt about it. When I first won, State Senator Pat Brown came to me and he said, you know, you have the most important job in the area. And I looked at him and I said, oh my gosh, I'm just a school teacher. But, you know, he's right. You can get things done with everybody's help. And it's your help too that made it happen. So thank you.
I just have a question and a comment. What's the current timeline for Cedar Brook? I know there's been some issues down.
Well, it's probably one year longer than we thought. We had a little problem when they excavated, and then we had to redo some stuff and pour some cement where we didn't. And again, any kind of construction project that goes on time, let me know. You know, but we have built in some things, but it's on scale and they're going to town now. So hopefully, I'm going to say, right after I get out of office, we'll probably have the ribbon cutting. But it's been my baby and I will make sure it happens.
Thank you. And my only other comment is, thank you for your years of service.
Thank you.
As a teacher, as County Executive. Almost seven years ago, I attended the first Youth in Government Day you had at the county in June of 2018.
Wow.
That long ago. That was a formative experience for me.
Thank you.
It had an impact. So thank you for all you've done to engage.
You know, I love.
More people in local government because it's often ignored.
I loved doing that, but then it kind of COVID hit, and then the schools, the transportation problem and all kinds of stuff. And we just couldn't get it together after that. So maybe I'll leave that on my desk for the next person, whoever that may be. So.
I just have a comment too. I wanted to thank you. And I wanted to say how wonderful it is to see you out and about. You're so immersed in our community and seeing you out there and speaking with people.
We were eating barbecue together last week. Yes.
At the farmer's market, you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's so important to have that accessibility with people and be present with people. And you're right out there. So thank you so much.
Well, you know, as a teacher, I tried to be at every different thing too. And I think it's the same thing with this job. This isn't a job, in fact, somebody called me about running for the job and asked me what it entails. And after I told them, they decided not to run. But it is a seven day, you know, if something happens at the jail on Saturday night, you know, your phone rings. So, and I'm sure your phones will be ringing tonight on the snow and so will mine. But it's fun. What the heck, you know? Beats sitting on the front porch in a rocking chair. It really does. So.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate it. But thank you for your, I'm a rookie at this arena. And I understand what comes to us, and I'm sure it's just magnified where you're sitting. And that, thank you, just doesn't seem enough.
Well, you know, I think every one of you know the saying, no good deed goes unpunished. And you learn that as soon as you get into government. But we still do it, you know? That's the important thing. And God bless you for still doing it.
Yeah. I also run with the fire company. You know, obviously, this radio project is big for the fireside as well as the township. And you answered my question because we were told it's another 18 to 24 month build out and implementation from when the go-live dates go. So it's good to hear that we're getting to that point where we can start moving forward. And now it helps us with our budgeting and all the other municipalities as well, that we're starting to get.
Right.
See the end line is starting to come into view.
And we had, it's been in law longer than I thought, but we had a number of questions. I had one municipality said, okay, if we take out, you know, a loan with you and the third year, our officer breaks the radio, since we don't own it, since you still really do, we have to pay for it. Yes, you know, you need to have your risk management insure it, but we have to, you know, make sure in the contract, those little things, you know, you never know what is going to happen. But I think the five-year plan where we're not charging a penny was the best. So we're hoping most people choose that.
And I appreciate the property tax rebate. I hope in your last year of your budget, you.
Yeah, we're continuing it.
And most importantly, there's a saying that we have down at the firehouse is, you don't rise to the level, you don't rise to the occasion, you sink to your level of training. And our fire training grounds need some TLC bad. And hearing that money was set aside and the amount was set aside the other night, we are truly grateful that the county recognizes that they needed some help.
I have to say, my father was the fire chief of my hometown. He was the president of the Fire Chiefs Association of the State. He was secretary treasurer of the Northeastern Pennsylvania Volunteer Firemen's Federation. For as long as I remember, every fireman's parade, we went to see my dad ride in the convertible. So firemen definitely have my heart, and we will make sure that we do what we have to.
We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any comments from?
All right. Well.
Because thank you.
You know where I live, and if you need anything, give me a buzz. Okay?
Thank you so much. Good night.
Enjoy your last year.
Yeah, I am. I am. I am on term limited. I have no choice.
Yes.
I'm not retiring though. I just got elected to be the Executive Vice President of the County Executives of America. So I will be on that board even when I'm not County Executive. So we will have a seat on the national stage.
Congratulations. That's outstanding.
Definitely.
Thank you for sharing that.
No, I have nothing to do with that.
Thank you. Is there anyone present that would like to address the board this evening? Or anyone online who'd like to make a comment during courtesy of the floor? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item five, Presentations. We have our December 2024 Financial Review Year-to-Date Report. I'll ask our Director of Finance, Tricia Dickert, to please present.
Good evening, Commissioners. So Kristin Blonnik has prepared what has turned out to be just a good snapshot summary of the financial statements that were released for December. Highlights on here, obviously, every single fund you can see came under budget and expenses, which is exactly what we shoot for. You know, that's the dedication of township staff across the board, just making sure they're doing what they can with only as much as they need. So that's a testament really to the people that you have in place in the township. I know you're all very proud of them, so we won't belabor that. And then obviously, most of the revenues came in above 100%. Again, that's sort of exactly what you want to see there. Just to keep in mind, the December financial report isn't really the end-all, know-all. We do still continue to book expenses and revenues back to 2024 for the first 90 days. So it'll be April or so until we start to see what those final numbers looked like. And, you know, right around the corner then from that is the release of, you know, what we expect to be another amazing audit. And that will also then show what the final numbers were for 2024. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them, but I could read all these numbers out to you, but I don't really think it's necessary. So we'll turn it over to you.
Tricia, thank you. Thank you to Kristin and the team and to all employees, as you said so eloquently, for just being mindful during the year with the allocation of taxpayer dollars to match what's budgeted. It is really wonderful to look at the snapshot and see the revenue for almost every account to be above and expenditures to be low. So hats off and kudos to the entire team. Thank you for keeping this board updated, not with just this, but also emailing us monthly, the entire report of the finances. So we are just so appreciative of you. Thank you.
Quite welcome. Thank you for that. I'll extend that to the team tomorrow. Well, if they're here tomorrow. Is there any board comment?
Oh, it's what? Great job. I mean, everybody.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, of course.
Agenda item six is meeting minutes from the January 15th, 2025 Board of Commissioners meeting. They have been distributed for your review. Are there any comments or questions? If not, I need a motion to approve.
Motion second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And item 7A, ordinances. We have an ordinance of the Township of South Whitehall, County of Lehigh, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, establishing the amount of compensation payable to the elected township tax collector, establishing the eligible reimbursements to be paid to the elected tax collector, authorizing the elected tax collector to charge, and establishing the amounts of real estate certification fees, fees for real estate tax duplicates, and return check charges fees, and providing for a repealer clause, severability clause, and effective date. And Tom, if you'd please present.
Thank you. So the local tax collection law requires that if the Board of Commissioners is inclined to revise the compensation of the tax collector, either increase it or decrease it, that action must occur on or before February 15th of the year preceding the year that the elected tax collector would assume office. So this would take effect, if you were to change the compensation via ordinance, it would take effect for the 2026 fiscal and tax collection year. So under the local tax collection law, first-class townships are limited to paying an amount of compensation that shall not exceed $10,000 to the tax collector. So all other permissible compensations, reimbursements for actual and needful expenditures for printing, postage, books, blanks, and forms, those are also permitted. And the tax collector may charge fees to taxpayers that are not paid directly by the township for certifications and duplicate tax fees. But currently, the township tax collector receives the $10,000 limited compensation and then the reimbursements as delineated, and is also permitted to assess $30 for the real estate tax certifications. So township staff conducted a benchmarking review of other municipalities in the area for both first-class townships and second-class townships, and came to a recommendation that a real estate tax duplicate fee of $5 per duplicate should be added to the compensation for the tax collector. So the ordinance was advertised in the January 16th issue of the Parkland Press. It would confirm that certifications would remain at $30 per property. Tax duplicate charge would be $5 per property, and then return check charges are also included as well at the actual rate charged to the tax collector by the banking institution which returned the check. The ordinance is ready for adoption if the board is inclined. So I'd seek a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. Are there any board comments or questions? Any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt said ordinance to confirm compensation of tax collector and establishing fees commencing January 1, 2026?
So moved.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And item 7B, an ordinance of the Township of South Whitehall, County of Lehigh, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending Part I Administrative Legislation, Chapter 58, Pension Plans, Article 5, Public Works Union Employees Pension Plan of the Codified Ordinances of South Whitehall Township at 58-45 definitions, to revise the definition of qualified employee, amending Section 58-47, Participation B, New Participants, to confirm that all employees hired on or after January 1, 2017 are not considered qualified employees, repealer, severability, and an effective date. And Tom, if you'd please present.
Thank you. So upon review of the Public Works Union Employees Pension Plan and the current collective bargaining agreement between the Township and the Teamsters Local 773 Public Works Union, the governing document, which is actually the ordinance itself, is not consistent with the CBA provision that essentially closed participation to the Public Works Plan participants for all members hired on or after January 1, 2017. So employees hired after that date are required to receive the defined contribution pension plan and not the defined benefit pension plan. So this ordinance before you, which I request motion to advertise it, amends Chapter 58, Article 5, at 58-45, to revise the definition of a qualified employee, to confirm that an employee hired on or after January 1, 2017 is not a qualified employee for purposes defining eligibility for the defined benefit plan. And then the Second Amendment would be at 58-47, participation under new participations, participants, to confirm that all employees hired on or after January 1, 2017 are not considered qualified employees. So this item also did come up in a recent, the recent 2020 to 23 audit. So that was conducted by the Auditor General. So this would immediately correct that identified issue.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. Are there any board comments or questions on this agenda item? Any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to grant permission to proceed with advertising of said draft ordinance?
Motion.
All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Down to resolutions. I know the applicant for Agenda Item 8D is in the audience. If it's the pleasure of the board, we could move that to the top of the resolutions to.
Sure.
Okay, very good. We'll proceed down to Agenda Item 8D at this time. We have a resolution extending the conditional preliminary final approval granted to a major plan entitled 1670 Church Road Pata Property LLC. I'll ask our Director of Community Development, Dave Manhart, to please present.
So this is a land development located at 1670 Church Road. So it's right across from PJ's essentially. It was originally approved in October of 2022. They've gotten a series of extensions. The last extension was a four-month extension, which extended to February 19th of this year. The plans have been ready to be signed. We were just waiting on a couple minor items. We have actually since gotten those items in since the 29th, when this memo was written. So the plans are ready to be signed. It's really just precautionary extension because we've had plans take anywhere from three days to three weeks. So it's really just to make sure we're covered in case it takes a long time. Thank you to the applicant for cooperating and getting everything to us.
Certainly.
Very good. Excellent. Well, I'm happy to hear that it's ready for recording. So if the board, does the board have any questions for the applicant at this point? Is there any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, do I have motion to adopt said resolution granting extension of time to a major plan entitled 1670 Church Road Pata Property LLC? Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Very good.
That was the easiest presentation I ever gave.
You did a great job.
I appreciate it. Your staff has been, I just wanted for the record, they are wonderful to work with. They're very accessible and very efficient. And again, this was out of a bonus of precaution, me thinking, oh, that's February 19th, you know, that's like a lifetime away. But things do happen, and I appreciate Mr. Manhart approaching me to say, maybe we ought to get a little more time. So thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing that information with us. And thank you to staff for working so diligently with the applicant. Back up to Agenda Item 8A, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Township of South Whitehall, Lehigh County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, approving an Information Sharing Access Agreement, ISAA, between the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, Department of Homeland Security, DHS, and South Whitehall Township. And Tom, if you'd please present.
Thank you. So recently, township officials became aware of a new fiscal year 2024 Flood Mitigation Assistance Program announced by the Federal Emergency Management Agency. So what that program accomplishes is to provide funds that could be used for projects to reduce or eliminate the risk of repetitive flood damage to buildings that are insured by the National Flood Insurance Program. So FEMA would choose recipients of the funding based on the applicant's ranking of the project eligibility and cost effectiveness of the project. So that, that funding actually runs through the township. So we would be the intermediary agency between FEMA and any applicants that would be the beneficiary for repetitive loss structures. So we are also required, as the board knows, to adopt a hazard mitigation plan for the township. So we, we did that during the November 20th Board of Commissioners meeting. So if we wanted to apply for this funding, we really would need to review the properties in the township that have experienced the repetitive flood loss claims in order to ascertain whether or not there are opportunities to explore that may fit within the established parameters of the flood mitigation assistance program. So in order to accomplish that review of the data, including but not limited to NFIP claims, policies, violations, and repetitive severe loss claims, we are required to enter into an Information Sharing Access Agreement, which would be between the Township and FEMA and the Department of Homeland Security. So the resolution before you tonight authorizes me to sign that agreement and to send it into FEMA and the Department of Homeland Security, and then receive the data and review it. So we're not signing up for any type of funding receipt or any obligations at this point. We're just signing up for receiving the data for the repetitive loss claims, if the board approves the resolution.
Very good, Tom. Thank you. I'll open it up to the board if there are any comments or questions on this agenda item.
So Tom, this, I understand that this is just, you know, saying that we want to be part of this program. But as a township, if we do qualify for repeated flood claims, which the whole Jordan Valley is, as, as a township that owns the land, if we would lose or have claims, would we be able to recoup that money to repair the damage? So for example, the football field down at the east side of Coverbridge Park, North Creek, really doesn't get used or developed as a recreational space because of the flooding. If we would then decide to start to develop that area as for recreation and a flood comes through, could we be the claimant for replace or repair of items?
So what this program is designed to do is where there's existing structures, especially occupied structures, they would then pay to either elevate said structures or to buy out said structures. So I don't believe that, you know, kind of what you're saying and suggesting is proactively looking at, you know, filing, filing a claim for areas that we see losses that aren't necessarily for occupied areas. I don't know that that meets the intent of the program. There may be other FEMA programs that would fall under that, but we could certainly take a look at that. But I know for this one, it's more specific to occupied structures, and we would essentially, you know, work with the, with the landowners to, to come up with a solution that would have to be, you know, a technical solution that was approved by FEMA to mitigate the claims.
Right. And my point is, I guess this may fall under Parks and Rec is that, that whole area of the park, it's a beautiful open meadow. But is there more that we can do with it? I mean, I like open space too, but you know.
And that's, that's a great question. It may not be a question for this particular program, but it's a question that we can certainly dive into in other, in other areas.
Thank you.
So I do have a quick question too, just to clarify for myself. You said occupied structures. So this is not just township-owned property. This is private property as well, residential?
Correct. But the township has to be the pass-through agency for the funds.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Will we have the total number of towns?
I do not. And that's the purpose for acquiring this data is to get a better handle of it so that you as a board can make informed decisions as to whether to enter into this program, assuming this program continues.
Very good. Thank you. Any public comment on this agenda item? Do I have a motion to adopt said resolution approving the adoption and administration of the Information Sharing Access Agreement? I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Then item 7B, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the delivery of real estate tax duplicates pursuant to section. authorizing the delivery of a real estate tax duplicates pursuant to Section 1712 of the First Class Township Code. And Tom, if you'd present.
I can actually do this.
Tricia wants to do it, so.
You're up.
So this is a pretty, this is a pretty standard annual request. So every year, the township waits for the county to release the tax duplicate, which basically drives the assessed values, the taxable assessed values for properties. And we have to put a resolution in front of the board for approval so that we can take that tax duplicate information and hand it off to the township's tax collector. So we received that tax duplicate from the county on January 27th. And, you know, there are timing requirements that we have to meet. So before you today, we're just asking for permission through resolution to hand that data off over to the tax collector.
Very good. Any board comments? Public comment? Do I have a motion to adopt said resolution?
Motion.
All second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Tricia.
Thank you.
Then to Item 7, I'm sorry, 8C, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Township of South Whitehall, Lehigh County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, approving an intermunicipal cooperative agreement for shared public works equipment machinery between South Whitehall Township and Salisbury Township. Tom, if you'd present.
Thank you. So the 2025 approved capital budget of South Whitehall Township provided for an appropriation in the amount of $100,000 for the purchase of shared public works capital equipment, machinery in the form of a dozer to be shared by the township and Salisbury Township, which are both first-class townships. The dozer is to help with grading and field maintenance activities specifically for South Whitehall Township in that regard. So the Intergovernmental Cooperation Act requires any time that a local government enters into an agreement for cooperation or delegates any functions, powers, or responsibilities to one or more other local governments. It has to memorialize certain actions within either an ordinance or a resolution. So the Intergovernmental Cooperation Act was recently amended. You don't have to do it by ordinance anymore. You can actually do it by resolution. So the enclosed resolution before you has been prepared to authorize the township manager to execute the agreement, which has been reviewed by both the township and Salisbury Township, and it meets the requirements of the Intergovernmental Cooperation Act. And it would allow the two municipalities to proceed with the purchase. Actually, we would still come back to you after the advertisement of the bids and the bids are received, but it would, it would allow that action to, to proceed. So I'd see two motions. One, to approve the resolution as submitted, and then two, to authorize myself and Herb Bender, Director of Township Operations, to proceed with the advertisement of the bid for the joint purchase as provided for in the agreement.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. Thank you for preparing and sharing the intermunicipal agreement with us. It's very interesting to read. It did cover maintenance and repairs and just the shared ownership and responsibilities. It was very helpful to read that information to get a better understanding. Will this go to Salisbury Township for approval before it's advertised?
Yeah, it's set to be approved at their next board meeting as well. And once both entities approve it, then we can proceed with the advertisement. We have to advertise two consecutive weeks. Then we'll receive the bids on the same, here at the township, on the same date. The bids will be identified in the notice, notice to receive bids, notice to bidders. And then we'll come back to you to authorize the expenditure to make sure it's within the budget.
Very good. Other questions from the board?
I do have two questions. I'm just wondering, I know it says that it's titled by both townships, but how does that work with insurance?
Yeah, what, what will happen with that? You, you can't put a title in two townships' names. So it'll go in one, and the intermunicipal agreement will do it. So we're actually trying to work with whoever comes in with the cheapest one. One will be on the certificate of origin and one will be on the title. That way, both people will be listed. But you are correct. You can only title it to one person.
Okay, all right. And the second question is more of a maintenance question. It's just because I'm curious how that works. Say Salisbury has it and we need it for something. So when the equipment comes back to us, do we, is there a maintenance checklist that someone from Salisbury and you both go over to make sure that it's, you know, good working order and vice versa?
Yeah, I have talked with James, their Public Works Director over there. We're going to use the pre and post-trip inspections that we currently use here at Public Works for all our equipment and trucks and that. So they'll fill it out. We'll get copies from them. They'll get our copy. So everyone knows everyone is taking the best maintenance and care of the machine.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other comments? Is there any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt said resolution approving the intermunicipal cooperative agreement for shared public works equipment machinery between South Whitehall Township and Salisbury Township? We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And I need a motion to authorize the township manager and Director of Township Operations to proceed with the advertisement of a bid for the joint purchase as provided for in the intermunicipal cooperative agreement for shared public works equipment machinery.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Keeping down to Agenda Item 8E, resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Township of South Whitehall, Lehigh County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, authorizing the township manager to proceed in accordance with the Pennsylvania disposition of Abandoned and Unclaimed Property Act with respect to all remaining escrow funds held by South Whitehall Township for the Union Street subdivision, Major Plan 2003-102. Tom, if you'd present, please.
Thank you. So in early 2008, so about January 8th, 2008, the township drew down the letter of credit for the Union Street subdivision, filed 2003-102. So at that time, the township completed the remainder of the public improvements work using the proceeds of the letter of credit. So the letter of credit that was being held in security for the project was drawn down and the township was worked, was reimbursed for the work that it performed. After those actions took place, the township still held in security $122,554.36. So in trying to clean this up and move past this and, you know, make sure we're following the required administrative actions, so this is no longer something we're carrying for so many years. We did research this. So the Pennsylvania disposition of Abandoned and Unclaimed Property Act indicates that tangible, tangible property is presumed abandoned and unclaimed if more than three years has passed. So we've certainly met that time period. The act requires that notice to the owner must be sent by first-class mail, not more than 120 days nor less than 60 days prior to the date in which the unclaimed property report is to be submitted to the state. So we have sent correspondence to the last known address for the developer, and that was returned as undeliverable. So we also sent again notice to six separate addresses on January 24th for names associated with the Union Street subdivision in the past. As of the date of this meeting, we have not received any responses to data. Is that, or have we now received any, Tricia?
We have not received any responses yet, except of those six letters that were sent out late January. Two of them have again come back as return mail.
Okay. Thank you for the confirmation. So prior to, to trying to return the funds, we did consult with the township engineer to make sure there's nothing outstanding at the subdivision. So we did go through the list. There was really the only two, there was three things that was, sorry, four that needed just minor action. So we first had to confirm that the basin is maintained privately by the homeowner. And then we had to install a security grate for the inflow pipes for basins, for Basin B1, B2, and B3. So that was conducted by public works personnel. And then Basin B2, the orifice plate has been, was removed, and then we retrieved it from the homeowner and replaced it. And there was a spoils pile that was in Basin B2, and that, that's been removed as well. So at this point, we prepared a resolution to proceed with the necessary steps to close out the project and then take any actions that are required under the disposition of Abandoned and Unclaimed Property Act. So that if you approve the resolution tonight, essentially this wouldn't come before you again. We would take all necessary steps to, to return it back under the Pennsylvania guidelines and requirements.
Thank you, Tom. Any board comments? Public comment? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt said resolution?
Motion.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Then to Item 8F, we have a resolution establishing the manner of compensation for the alternate solicitor to the South Whitehall Township zoning hearing board. Tom, if you'd please present.
Thank you. So recently, the zoning hearing board appointed Attorney Mark Fisher from Gross McGinley LLP to, to serve as the alternate solicitor to the township zoning hearing board. He did provide a, a, a letter of, of his fee schedule, which is $185 per hour for his rates and then any work performed by a public, paralegal, I'm sorry, is $125 per hour. So as the board knows, you don't appoint any solicitors to the zoning hearing board, but you do set their, and establish their compensation. So this resolution would effectuate that requirement.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. Are there any board comments or questions? Any public comment? Do I have a motion to adopt said resolution?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Tom. Agenda Item 8G, we have a resolution reappointing David, David C. Torrey to the South Whitehall Township vacancy board. Tom, if you'd present.
So the First Class Township Code, specifically Section 530, requires the township Board of Commissioners to appoint a registered elector of the township as a member of the vacancy board each year. So the term only, only lasts one year at a time. So this would reappoint Mr. Torrey to, to a term that would expire December 31st, 2025.
Very good. Thank you. Any board comments? Public comment? None. I need a motion to adopt said resolution.
So moved.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Then to Item 8H, a resolution appointing Frank, Frank Petricelli as chairman of the Environmental Advisory Council. And Tom, if you'd present.
So Title 53, Chapter 23, Section 2323 of the Pennsylvania Consolidated Statutes requires that where a formal environmental advisory council has been formed, the chairperson of the EAC shall be designated by the governing body. So at the January 27th meeting during election of officers for the EAC, they did nominate and voted to recommend Frank Preticelli, Preticelli to serve in the role as chair for 2025. So the resolution before you this evening confirms the appointment of Mr. Petricelli as chair for the rest of the calendar year.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. We do thank Frank Petricelli as well as David Torrey for their willingness to serve. Are there any comments from the board? Any public?
My only comment, I want to thank Frank for agreeing to serve as chairman. The EAC, which had been dormant for many, many years, certainly as we discuss issues of land preservation, land use in general, EAC is going to play a significant role in that. So to all, to Frank and the other four members of the EAC, thank you for what you do and look forward to working with all of them over the coming years.
Well said. No other comments from the board? Any public comment? Do I have a motion to adopt said resolution?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Then to Item 9A, we have a motion to approve the required interest payment of $28,373, account number 01406001-40197, to satisfy the requirements of Act 205 in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Auditor General for the deficient public works defined pension plan MMO payment with a period of time from January 1, 2019 to February 23rd, 2021. And Tom, if you'd please present.
Thank you. So just as a general overview, the township recently completed the pension audit for the years 2020 to 2023. So I want to identify the fact we have not, we did not receive any additional findings for new issues. But we have identified the need to clean up some items that, that were not closed out from previous years. So this is another one of those examples. So during the course of the 2017 to 2019 Public Works Defined Benefit Pension Plan audit, it was discovered that the 2019 minimum municipal obligation paid that year was deficient in the amount of $164,237 due to the fact that the amortization requirement was understated. So $165,000 payment was made by check dated February 9th, 2021 and deposited by February 23rd, 2021. But the interest that was required in accordance with Act 25 was not factored into the payment correctly. So the rate of interest for that year's valuation, January 1st, 2019, was 7.875%. So we've calculated with the help of the plan actuary to the required interest that needs to be paid is $28,373. So that was two years, 53 days at a rate of 7.875% interest. So, so because it wasn't paid in '21 when the $165,000 was paid, this was a repeat finding for the 2020 to 23 audit. So if you approve the motion before you tonight to remit the $28,373 out of account 01406001-40197 for the '24 fiscal year to satisfy the requirements of Act 205 in the Commonwealth of PA Auditor General for that year's deficient public works defined pension plan MMO payment from January 1st to 2019 to February 23rd, 21, that will then close out this issue, and it will not be another repeat finding.
Very good. That's very good news that this is being cleaned up and, and rectified. Thank you very much for the work that you and team have done. Are there any comments or questions on this agenda item? Any public comment? I need a motion to approve said motion. So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Then to Item 9B, we have a motion to proceed with capital purchase for South Whitehall Township Public Works Department Ford Explorer. I'll ask our Director of Operations, Herb Bender, to please present.
Thank you. Public Works is respectfully asking for a motion to proceed with ordering a Ford Explorer. The price for this vehicle is $38,412. Public Works, the memo said we solicited three. After the memo was done, the fourth one came in, which was higher. So that's why I didn't change it. It didn't play a big factor into it to ensure we were getting the best price for the vehicle. The current vehicle that this will replace is a 2010 Ford Fusion with around 60,000 miles. This vehicle has undercarriage rusting issues. This vehicle is not good for getting around in the snow. This quote is a CoStarz quote. Attached in the packet is the CoStarz contract. The reason for coming now is to get the order placed with the dealer. The vehicle will not be delivered till the end of April or the beginning of May in that timeframe. So we're just requesting a motion to proceed with the purchase of a Ford Explorer. This Explorer was budgeted for, in the 2025 budget, for $41,176 in the capital equipment and vehicles line. The reason you see it under, when we did, he held his pricing from last year at budget time, we, I added the 7% as the contingency with the pricing of vehicles that is getting astronomical. So we did not need that part of it.
Fantastic. Thank you, Herb. Thank you for preparing this packet with the quotes. It was very good information for us to review. Are there any questions from the board?
Do we have to put a deposit down to hold it, or we just, we don't pay till April or May, whenever it gets delivered?
Net 30 days. So.
So we don't have to pay till June? All right.
Yeah, is all I have to do is give them the purchase order and that locks everything in, so.
Any other questions? Any public comment? Do I have a motion to approve said motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Can I just ask, the car that you replaced, do you send, even in that condition, do you send it to auction?
Yes, and you will not believe what some of them sell for. Yeah, everything we replace or we're taking out of the fleet goes to municipal bid. That way, we're following the First Class Township Code of dispersing of the used vehicles.
Then to Item 10, correspondence and information. Tom, if you'd please review board's missions in upcoming meetings.
Yes, so upcoming meetings and events are as follows. Monday, February 10th, 7:00 p.m., we have the Parks and Recreation Board. Tuesday, February 11th, 6:00 p.m., Crime Watch Meeting. Wednesday, February 12th, 10:00 a.m., Civil Service Commission. Thursday, February 13th, 7:00 p.m. is the planning commission, for which I will note Cavalry at Willow's, Willow's Cavalry Temple did pull from the agenda. They will not be on the agenda that evening. They will not be on the agenda that evening. Wednesday, February 19th, 7:00 p.m. is the Board of Commissioners. Please make sure you check the website. There's some uncertain weather forecasts for next week, so there may be cancellations. So please make sure you're checking the website.
Very good, good reminder. Thank you, Tom. Then to item 11, direction discussion, we have the Jordan Valley Overlay. I'll ask our Director of Community Development, Dave.
So this is the Jordan Valley zoning update, the overlay that we've been working on. We held some stakeholder sessions here in the conference room here. And at that, we kind of hashed out some details of concepts that we're exploring. The next step in that process was to prepare a, it's called the Hub Site, so that we can kind of get some of that information out to the public and get some feedback so that people would know what we were up to. I have the webpage up. This was done with GIS. This was one of Mark Cologne's, or Mark Gata's, final projects that he worked on when he was here. So that, I'd like to thank him for all the work he did. Chris Stroller then kind of picked up where he left off. And what it is, is really a synopsis of the project. It provides the background and then some of the concepts that we're moving forward with. The, there's a frequently asked questions, kind of providing information about an overlay. We also have a comment form that is taking a little while to load, but this way people can submit comments, ask questions, things like that, in addition to picking up the phone and calling us if there are any questions. Project background, really, this is born out of the comprehensive plan. And then the landscapes plan, where we started looking at different types of preservation options. And the option really that we landed on for this is what's called conservation subdivision, which is where you, instead of having, here's a good example, a sprawling type development, you cluster that development into, onto smaller lots and preserve more open space. So this really ties into a lot of the goals that were developed out of the comprehensive plan in a way to implement that. Additionally, we had talked about place types and specifically open space types that are in the landscapes plan. For the purposes of the overlay, we're looking at categories of open space. So there's conservation open space, and then there's civic open space. And depending on the development type or conservation type, there's different balances and percentage requirements to opt into this overlay. You see, we have development types on the end here. We're looking at village residential, village mixed use, and then planned industrial. And there's another tab that kind of goes into more detail on what those are. Here's some sketch-up diagrams to kind of get, try and get the concept across for each of those. And one of the things that we've learned going through this process is the importance of communication with diagrams, with pictures. Because when you get to the ordinance piece, not many people know what all that means. So we're trying to get the information of what we're trying to convey and what we're trying to allow through this overlay by using this website. With that, and then there's also links to other resources that we have. That, I will open it up. Oh, we're going to open, it's kind of a soft release right now, so we just kind of have the link buried. But after tonight, if the board so chooses, we can release it to the public and advertise it on the website.
I'm speechless. Having attended many, many, many public meetings for years to work on the comp plan and working here as a commissioner, adopting the comp plan, watching the work that you and your team have done to build out the landscapes plan, and now to see this to come to fruition and actually have a website developed that is readable, it makes sense, it's educational, and it gives a glimpse of an option a developer could use in that region to really develop that land. I think what you've done, Dave, one of the comments that I've heard over and over again through the years is people that live here, and also new people, new residents coming to South Whitehall, they love the mix of farmland and neighborhoods and a little bit of commercial. And what you've done here with your team is to bring that, the reality, as an option, as an overlay. And I commend all the work that you've done. And I would absolutely love to see this type of development come to fruition here, farmettes, and just to have some open space preservation on those beautiful fields, as well as growth and light industrial. Just amazing. So thank you for all the work that you've done. I absolutely agree with posting this to the website and look forward to the feedback from the public. And if there's a way that you could share with us at some point down the road, community comments, I would really like to hear how our community embraces this. Thank you.
I would add on to that and say a couple of things. Certainly, most of us have been focused on land development, zoning, preservation. They're all complex topics. And certainly, from a municipal government standpoint, how do you balance them? You have limits to what you can do with zoning. Most development is by right, and you're very limited in what tools you have. Preservation on its own is very expensive, whether it's easements or whether you're buying property outright. It's an incredible expense to the taxpayers. So this is, this is a huge breakthrough, honestly, in my view. I've looked into this concept over the past few days, just to see where it's worked elsewhere. And there's really nobody else in our region that has done as much work on this as you have and in your department has. It's been done successfully in other parts of the country. It's interesting to see, you know, from Georgia to Wisconsin, what some of these communities look like once they're built out. But, but a way in which you tie in all of our concerns about the northern tier of the township into one plan, you incentivize preservation through private investment where there's an economic benefit to developers, a public benefit of preserved land, not at the expense of taxpayers, and you're providing for great housing that's going to hold its value for a long period of time, that's going to always be an attractive type of community for people to live in, to shop in, put the restaurants in it. It's really, this is, this is really significant. I'm interested to see where it goes. And my only other comment is, I'm running out of positive words in the English language to direct towards you and your work and Chris and Mark. Honestly, like, it's just, it's just incredible. And I'm sure Chris will bring this up. We talk about planning, like, we're now moving towards the action phases of this and moving towards a written ordinance and having developers come in and preserve property and build good, good quality housing. So all around, this is the culmination of sort of everything that your department and the township's been working towards for a long time. So excited to see where this goes. You're right, the link is buried, but there are, I know there are some people that have looked at this already. They found it on the agenda and think it's incredible. So the more we can get this out to the public, the better. And let's, let's get rolling on this, for sure.
So Dave, I have to thank you. When I first saw this, I, I was, it blew me away. It just looked so beautifully done. I can't imagine the time that you put into this, you and Chris. I feel like our residents have spoken and South Whitehall has listened because years ago, people wanted preservation, they wanted open space. And here with the cluster community, we have that. And it's respecting landowners and their rights as well as the residents' wishes. And I think it's just so beautifully done. The Craftsman homes, the pictures, the visuals, and I think that's so important with that hub. It just elevates the township's outreach to the public and the engagement to the public and getting that feedback. It's phenomenal, and I'm, I'm so grateful. Thank you, thank you. You are so talented. It's really brilliant. Thank you.
We also have a very good consulting team with Michael Baker. And In-Town Design has been helping a lot with kind of design guidelines and kind of setting the stage for a lot of this. So it's been collaborative effort, for sure.
Any other comments from the board?
Jacob took mine away. Actually, get the.
Is there any public comment? I know this is the first time the public is seeing it. Any comment? Onward, looking forward to next steps, Dave. Thank you.
Pressure's on.
Yeah, it, we can set the stage, we can do the regulations, but we need a developer to come in and work with it. So there's two pieces to this, and that's kind of the piece. If, if we can get it to happen and we have a developer that wants to come in and develop this way, I, yeah, it's going to be great. But thank you.
You're welcome, Dave. Well-deserved comments. We have no old business, courtesy of the floor. Again, opportunity to address the board. Does anyone up here or in person? I need a motion to authorize payment of invoices and disbursements.
Some moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have no exact session. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this meeting is adjourned.